It's ten o'clock. I'm calling to order the Gillum County Court regular meeting. Today is November sixth. And we do have a form established. All three commissioners are present. We will have the flag salute at this time. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. We're going to make a change to the agenda, but I'm going to ask the other commissioners, did we have any suggested revisions to the agenda?
No.
I don't.
Mine is just an order change and it is, I'm going to be moving up the South Gillum Cemetery District first on the agenda prior to three point oh correspondence so that they can leave. And so come on up, Jenna.
Hi Kevin.
Okay. And we'll pull up another chair over here as well. You can sit here. Thank you. Hello.
Hi.
Mornings.
The agenda item was to consider approval of a grant extension request for South Gillum County Cemetery District. So go ahead.
Yeah. Well, I'm Kevin Potter. I'm recently becoming chairman of the board of the South Gillum County Cemetery District. Again, has recently become our fiscal officer.
Very recently for both of us.
So we're there to ask for an extension of this grant, four days, twenty days, twenty twenty-two. Our original goal was to dig a well cemetery grounds because we were spending, are spending six thousand sixty-five hundred ninety months through the city irrigation resources. Problem being not that so much the budgetary consideration is the sparsity water during July, August. To the point where we get comments about the appearance of the cemetery. And the city comes and asks us to knock off the use of the water as best we can. So we filed an application and held a well with the state. Covid came along and put his way on the back burner for that. They recently gave a notification, however, that our application has come up a step. They also have a requirement that they prioritize wells in certain areas. And beautification in cemeteries like ours is on the bottom of the list. So. But our application is still valid. It's still in process. They just can't give us a date when the permit would be issued.
And it does say that it won't interfere with any other. Like it won't take down. Won't diminish the use that the city needs or the surrounding areas.
We're good there. But our goal remains the same. We have a committee set up amongst us to develop a plan for water conservation. Along that line, we're exploring more efficient sprinkler setups, distribution of water plants to make what water we do have go as far as it can. We also have a new section on board, Angela Anderson, who's doing a good job and he's been doing a better job of irrigation than we have experienced before. So we're going down that path. Phase one is designed to be planning for the seeding of the soil, application of seed to filter the state. Right now, we are against the freezing weather. We had to shut our water systems down. So we're gonna have to wait until spring before we apply seed and can keep it moist and controlled. And then the phase two would be to see the two cemeteries, the Condon Cemetery and the Mayville Cemetery. So that's where we're at. We need a little more time to get our ducks in a row, weather, weather. See how the well application process goes. We've asking for them an extension in the next fiscal year. For this grant that we can keep going with our project.
Extension to how long do you need?
Just to the end of twenty-five or?
I think until the end of twenty-five.
Okay, so December thirty-first.
Yes.
Do you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
With with the seeding and everything that you're talking about. I don't know how much a well, I know wells are expensive, but your guys' ultimate goal is to still proceed
Yes.
with the well and to try to beer on water.
Yes.
Which would say
Trying to get us away from the sea. We may find that the well doesn't produce as much as we'd like, but we still feel we need to pursue the well so that we're not bound by the limits of the city. As for its water distribution, there's
Sure.
what they need to.
But with the funds that you have, you still will be able to think you do both of these, the well and the hydro seeding? Or some of the upgrades or?
Some of it. The original price of the grant was simply the price of the well in the ground. Didn't include distribution pipes or anything like that.
Yeah.
Commissioners have any questions?
And with the new section, there's there's we can make changes that were kind of the whole session didn't want to pursue like timers and stuff so that we could water at night when water is available. So that's some things that we're looking at is water once more efficient.
Yes. Especially while we're still on the work on the city water system, we need to be as efficient as we can. Right now it looks pretty good up there, but we've had fall radius. It's leading into that, our section was a little bit more active on application of water. So waters are overarching concern.
Do you think a letter from the court would help to their well moving the importance or?
It may.
I'm just trying to think of something that might help move it up the list a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know. I made this, so I'm not really sure what, how that all went down. But I can certainly ask any questions.
Just a thought.
Yeah. Good point. Any other discussion? And we have a motion to extend the South Gillum County Cemetery District's grant to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll I'll make the motion that we approve. What was that number? Was it four twenty twenty-two? Is that right?
Yes.
That we extend the four twenty twenty twenty-two grant to the South Gillum County Cemetery District so that they can proceed as they plan.
Commissioners look at the date and extend it by?
Oh, twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to extend South Gillum County Cemetery District's grant for projects to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Is is there any other discussion? Before we vote? Okay. On the paper. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well done, Pat. Thank you.
Do you need anything else from us?
We're going to send to a grant extended.
Okay.
Form and you'll get that from the first one. And if you learn anything about anything the county court can do to help you, move your contract along a lot of stuff.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your contribution.
I think one thing that would be helpful in future, we have grant numbers on our grants and then we can reference the grant number because when they get extended out, it might help us track the year and the project number. Okay, let's go back on the agenda to court comments and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time. Speakers are asked to raise their hand to be recognized by the chair and the show give their name and city and limit their comments to three minutes. I only have, I have Jenna and Kevin who just spoke. I have Brittany Dark and I have Jed Crowder on the agenda. Is there any other comment? No? Okay, Brittany, you have your section on the agenda already, so we will hear it then rather than in public comment. And then Jed, were you wanting to speak on your extension as well? Not anything generally? So you want to handle it then? Okay. All right. So we will go ahead and proceed with the agenda. We do have correspondence. We have correspondence including public meeting law training scheduled for January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. That the city of Condon has organized, Catherine Breiner. It will be it's an Oregon Government Ethics Commission training. It will be, there will be basic ethics at one o'clock. And then public meeting law required training at five-thirty. And that will be held at Memorial Hall. So we all will be attending that, I'm sure. I will. I'm sure the other commissioners will. Any other public bodies, boards can attend as well. We also have a two thousand twenty-four home state rebate for certification. This is from our assessor. Ted Wilkins, as you know, because of the waste management post fees and the economic enhancement ordinance, we have tax checks that go to each homeowner up to five hundred and ninety dollars currently. There were five hundred and sixteen applicants. And our assessor has provided each year back to two thousand fifteen, the breakdown of what the rebate was and the tax. So that's correspondence. We have a capital investment grant final report from the city of Condon. That grant was for water meters. Their remote red water meters and they get installed and they're seeing results of having the new system. The new meters are more sensitive when water is rolling through them and they detect leaks. So that project has been completed. There's also a, an interim waste management. They provide us monthly reports of the fees that we receive, waste management, as well as chemical waste management. For the month of September, we received four hundred and twenty-eight thousand sixty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. And the tonnage is also listed for chemical waste management, six thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. We have a DQ compliance letter that was provided by Waste Management that their facility was determined to be in compliance with their permits at the time of the inspection and the inspection report is included. So that's online and in your packets as well. We have a letter recognition for our master, Dewey Kennedy. He was recognized nationally, correct? And I don't think he wants to be probably called out, recognized, but this deserves recognition. We have a letter that he was recognized nationally, receiving the Asphalt Recycling and Reclaiming Association, two thousand twenty-five Charles R. Valentine Award for excellence in cold recycling. And that's quite an award he received this and that Gillum County, because of his efforts and his ability to recycle asphalt and reuse it in a way that is cutting edge, really, I think. So congratulations on that recognition.
Good job.
Are you going to get it? Are you going to go to the meeting?
Yep.
Okay, we have a Veterans Day special that we have an information that's provided in your packet about what our veteran service person is doing for veterans in our area to promote Veterans Day and provide them with food or drink. There's also a flood review email. I would like to talk about this later in the agenda and I probably should have brought it up in additions or revisions, but I would like some direction on this email, but we'd like to discuss this during new business. There's some comment that needs to be made by the twenty-second of November, and I just wanted to make sure that you're on board with this email. So I would like to move that to new business, please. You guys okay with that? All right, and that hopefully includes a correspondence. So now we have an update from Frontier Chamber of Commerce, Brittany Dark. Yes, come up into the right chair. Thank you.
All righty. Hello, hello.
Hi.
Thank you guys so much for letting me be here. I'm Brittany Dark. I'm the new executive director for the Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce, which serves Gillum, Sherman and Wheeler counties. So I'm just here to give you a brief update about what we're working on and to invite any questions either now or later, if you have any. As you are aware, we administer the small business, the Gillum County Small Business Grant. And I just have a few numbers for you guys. So if you want any additional numbers, I'll pass this. Please do let me know. It looks like sixty-eight percent of our award recipients have been female, thirty-two have been male, thirty-two percent. Twenty-six percent of the applicants have been startups. Nineteen percent has been in launch, so less than one-year business. And thirty-seven percent have been in operation for one year or more. And then the remaining balance is of growing businesses that have been applying for. So we have some of those. We have expended the funds that have been awarded to date and we will be requesting the release of the second tranche of those funds from Brooklyn in the future. So it's going well and it's very well received by the community. Any questions, Brittany?
Well, you have a written report for us. I know that you, you're newer to the position, but in the past, I think there was a report with who who received the grants.
Okay.
And just in the view, that's something I would like to see. I don't know if the others have any input on that.
Yeah, I I would like to see, you know, how it's being dispersed and if it's continued on a good. Yeah. And then, you know, is there something different or more that we can do to support this program? And I did have one question. There was, I see an award for, looks like a nonprofit for ten thousand. I was just curious if any nonprofits, a lot of nonprofits were running through some of the chamber?
No, to my knowledge, only one, and it was this year.
Okay. Yeah, because I, and I see it's a good cause, but most of the other grants, I guess my
Right.
feeling is kind of targeted for small business, nonprofit.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, it's only been the one in my, when I went through everything to see, it looks like it's only been one nonprofit and it was this year.
I will say that I sat down with Brittany, oh, sometime in the summer, and we just talked about the program. And it became clear that there are not a lot of parameters or guidelines around this money. So we may in a work session want to create some so that there's guidance for how you distribute the money. For example, do we want it to be only for profit businesses, not nonprofits? I know these are just thoughts that I that I had when we were talking, because we do have funding streams for nonprofits, but we don't have an opportunity for small businesses to access any other pool of money with this money. So. Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, what is the nonprofit?
It was the Food Bank up here in Cleveland for their new facility.
Okay.
But it was mostly for refrigerators and
I thought I saw one for the elk sludge.
They're not a nonprofit. They're a
Okay.
More like a charitable.
Yeah, but they're not a nonprofit.
Okay, I thought they were a nonprofit. Or anyway.
They have to apply to tax return.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't like to bring up a entity that isn't here to to stay, but I think it's going to be coming up in the cycle on capital investments grant application. And I think in that application, they know that they are a nonprofit. So yeah, there could be reasons, discrepancies about that, but I just wanted to say that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will be sure to get get you guys a list and who's being, you know, who have been awarded the grants and all of that. And then we'll move forward and maybe do work sessions in the future if we need to do that.
Great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple other updates. We are currently the hub for the Main Street and Rapidization Grant, which is done through the state of Oregon. We have applied for previous grants, Times Journal Assad Grant was one of them. Sprite General Store, Moro and Moro, the Hotel Moro, that is currently open. The pre-application just closed on November first and we have a handful of applicants. We have a couple from Arlington and a couple from Condon as well. And so we'll be applying for those. It's not due until March, but we will be working to facilitate that. We're also working with Business Oregon to provide technical assistance and grants through their technical assistance program as well as their EEIP program, which is targeted towards individuals who make less money or have additional barriers to obtain services and stuff like that. So we've been working hand in hand with Business Oregon and High Desert Partnership in order to facilitate these these programs. And those include hosting small business success days. That is actually going to be coming here in Condon tomorrow. It starts at eleven. There'll be a lunch and learn event. And then there's also additional one-on-one hands-on training for the businesses available. And then we'll have some follow-up to that as well. And we also are currently facilitating a Code Starter Core Program, which is a ten-week-long program for entrepreneurs where they, and it's virtual. And then we will be facilitating a Code Starter Boot Camp starting mid-November, which is four weeks long, three hours a week. And that's for entrepreneurs to be able to access and that'll be held at night. So hopefully more people will be able to attend. But that's just a little bit of what we have going on. So if there's anything else, obviously events. The Harvest or the Fall Festival is coming to Condon. We just got done with the trunk or treat and the Main Street trick-or-treating. But if there's anything that the funding, or it's at Condon, the chamber is usually responsible for that you guys see that maybe is falling through the cracks while I'm here. And like I said, I'm new. I would love for anybody in the community and or yourselves to let me know, because we want to keep up the same, you know, caliber in which you've been accustomed to being served. So thank you guys.
Okay.
Brittany, I do have a question. Sorry. Randomly. How's the sign going for the bathroom in Arlington? Has that been put up?
I don't know that. This is Brooklyn, correct? I think so.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Arlington bathroom sign?
Yeah, it was like a collaboration between the county and the port and the chamber. I think the signs there in someone's possession in Arlington. I was just wondering if it had been put up. Sorry to hit you. I was just thinking of it as we were talking, but.
No worries. I will check in on that. Any other questions?
Did you have anything you wanted to tell us about the the second story project or do you want to hold that?
Well, if, can I do that right now?
Yeah.
Is that okay? I would like to request an extension for the second story grants. Like I said, I just came on in June. However, in connecting with the individuals who are awarded the grants, they've been running into some challenges with contractors, either coming out to just give a bid or coming out to do work after the bid or, you know, it's just been a very big challenge for them. And so I'd like to request an extension through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five for this grant. And my intent is to work more closely with the property owners to get them connected with contractors, whether they be here or elsewhere and see if we can't make it worthwhile for the contractors to come out. So whether it's working on both of their projects at the same time, doing the same thing, just kind of doing a more hands-on approach to try to get the contractors to come out and actually do the work. So if that would be available, we'd
And you're making those plans through December thirty-first or?
Yes.
Any questions about that? No? Do you have questions, Grant, about the the whole thing?
Well, I just, yeah, I would just I was just curious when that when was that awarded and how much? Do you remember?
It was twenty twenty-two, I think, that it was awarded.
Okay.
And and I don't know off the top of my head how much it was. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You know, it's a reimbursement grant, so none of it has been expended.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Maybe just maybe shoot me an email or something.
Yeah.
Be great.
Order to be to expand housing with existing buildings.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so
If that's helpful.
Oh, great.
And it was awarded in FY twenty-three, twenty-four at three hundred and thirty thousand, which was between two building owners. I think it was two hundred thousand to one building owner, a hundred and thirty-two at the other building.
Okay.
Again,
And the two buildings are was it the flat building, the Napa?
Yeah, the Danielson Building and then the Barker Building there. So above Napa, which was their intention is to like suites or whatever. And then above the bank building, I guess. So right there to the north of Two Boys. Their intention is to do, I think it was ten apartments on that upper half. And the agreement does have like stipulations written in it between the county and the chamber about what those spaces can be used for, like they can't be rented out, Airbnb or short-term rentals. They have to be like leases or or long-term rentals. So that is written into the agreement.
Okay, thank you, Brooklyn. Do we have a motion to extend?
So I, oh, go ahead.
I think, was it, Brooke, was it like twenty-two, twenty-three, and then it was extended for another year?
No, it was awarded there right at the end of Kalin's. So I think it was in that last spring of two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. So that was the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Yeah.
Right? Is there any other discussion about it?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to extend the second story?
I'll move to approve the, to move the second story project to to, we want to go twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, right.
Yeah, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
To December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to extend the Frontier, Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce Grant for second story project to a completion date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you, guys. Update from Gillum County Library and Mary Research. She's appearing by Zoom.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So our staff. I just got, I just got done writing a grant to the ALA, American Library Association for ADA access on both entries for the library. And we should be hearing back for Matt in late December or January. And I just finished up the annual state report for the State of Oregon Library and I will be forwarding that on to you in the next week or two. And then, as some of you know, we, in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we have an IGA with the Condon School District where we provide on average ten hours a week of library services. And that seems to be working better with splitting my time up between the two places. And Deanna, our youth librarian, she does most of our programming. She is the smart reading volunteer at the Condon Early Learning Center. And in the springtime, she does agriculture in the classroom at the Condon Grade School for K through four. And our summer reading program. And then our interns, they one of our interns is working on scanning all of our old library minutes from the last ninety-five years. library minutes from the last ninety-five years into the computer, so we'll have a digital copy of those in case something happens. Um, and then we, we are also part of the Libraries of Eastern Oregon, Leo. And we just, Leo just launched a new program called Discover and Go Library Passes, where you can use your library card to check out passes for the local arts, culture, history, and recreation organizations. And those include Mary Hill Museum, Columbia Gorge Discovery Center, High Desert Museum, O M Z, Oregon State Parks, and we're slowly adding more to that. And there's sixteen um, counties that's part of Leo. There's Baker, Crook, Gillum, Grant, Harney, Hood River, Jefferson, Lake, Malheer, Moro, Sherman, Umatilla, Union, Wallowa, Wasco, and Wheeler County. And there's a link on our website for that also. And some events that we are planning for the upcoming year, um, we'll have Museum of Natural and Cultural History brought back to us for um, Native Innovation Traveling Exhibit, and that will be end of April, first part of May, we'll have that here. Um, and of course, we'll have our Fourth of July Book Sale, and the money from our book sale that the board puts on, that money um, provides funding for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library that, where they sent, we send out books to every child in Gillum County from ages zero to five. And we started this program in January of two thousand and eighteen, and so far, we have mailed out four thousand four hundred and seventy-three books to the children of Gillum County. Um, and then, of course, the Main Street Trick-or-treating, we had, we had over two hundred trick-or-treaters in the library that day. And then for the Christmas Light Parade, our board is hoping to partner with the Condon Theater um, to show a movie after they see, after the kids see Santa. And um, our board is going to provide hot dogs for all of those attendees for the movie. And then we're hoping, hoping to partner with the Condon Arts Council to bring back the Missoula Children's Theater um, the summers or late spring. So that's all we've got going on right now.
That's good work, Mary. Thank you. And the library was painted the outside.
Yes, and we're hoping to get the inside painted this winter.
And that was budgeted, so. Yeah. Good work. Does any commissioners have questions? No questions?
No.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have update from Family and Senior Services of Reno Life.
Morning. Um, I don't know, how do you want to do this for sure? Like the veggie R X stuff or?
I'd save the veggie R X for um, do your presentation and then do the veggie R X.
Okay. Okay. Um, I guess I have a sore throat a little bit, so I'm not going to be able to speak very well, but um, I just want to go over kind of some of the things that I do and that kind of stuff with New County Court. Uh, I oversee the Arlington and Condon Meal Sites. I currently have one cook in Arlington and one assistant in Arlington, uh, two assistants in Condon. And then also, we have the volunteers that contributed quite a bit of time to those. Um, I'm responsible for monthly reporting of CAPCO, following state regulations, tracking money, and preparing menus. Um, it's been almost ten years since I have been in the position. And we just currently have hired two assistants um, at the Condon Meal Site. And so hopefully I can kind of step back and not put so many hours in there. Um, so I'm excited of what maybe could transpire with the Condon Meal Site. Um, and then also, I've been helping seniors in the county if they're having issues. Um, able to, like if they're moving um, to Summit Springs, able to help the family get them into that facility. Um, also, I am a Sheba Counselor for Medicare. So people are able to come in and I can help them with their Medicare-type needs. Um, some of the projects that I've done over the past year have been doing arts and crafts with the Summit Spring residents. And then also, I started baking with some of the Summit Springs residents that wanted to do that, because that was always one of the things that I heard was when they moved in there. They couldn't cook anymore, where a lot of those people liked to cook and that kind of stuff, but they couldn't go into the kitchens. So at the time, Summit Springs had a um, apartment that wasn't being rented, so we had it out there in that apartment, but they've since rented that out, so we haven't been able to do that. So trying to figure out like another way to be able to do that, to engage the seniors in doing that kind of stuff that they used to like to do. Um, and some of the um, makes, like the senior service programs that I would like to expand and seek education to meet the needs of our Gillum County residents would be Medicaid, Social Security, hospital, nursing, home, physical therapy, and like end-of-life type things, something that we don't want to deal with, but we need to. Um, and then other things that I've been doing is like transportation, um, filing the H R T G, file rural, rural transportation grant um, with the grant data, and then transporting if needed. Uh, current boards that I'm on are the Senior Advisory Committee, um, and that has to do with like the meal site type stuff. And usually those meetings are in the Dalles once a month. Um, L chip, which we usually have here, and then.
So it's bringing out what's L chip?
It is the.
I never heard of it. I just.
Um, gotta get the whole. So it's the Local Community Advisory Council.
Okay.
Um, and then also the Summit Spring Court. So, and I think that's kind of, and I just have the, um, I think you guys were handed this little banner, and I need to go through it for sure, but um, so I'm trying to put together, and I'm going to call it Santa for Seniors, and do like a Christmas giving tree. It's something that we've never done before. Uh, but I feel like there's a lot of seniors in Gillum County that can use that help. Um, the flyer that I gave you guys is just like for Condon area, and I need to redo one for Arlington, but I need to reach out to um, some people in Arlington to see what we can do down there as far as like where to do it and that kind of stuff. Um, and then, do you guys have any questions on that?
You have a long list.
Yeah.
I just thought, and I just too, there's a lot more things that I want to do with this, because I always feel like we worry about our people at Christmas time. But we have three hundred sixty-five more day, three hundred sixty-four more days out of the year that we probably should worry about them too. So I want to work on that as well as like figuring out some other things, and maybe trying to get some volunteers on board to go into these people and help them and that kind of stuff, so.
Really good. I like, with our large single population in our county, um, it's a very important thing to provide real services.
Well, and I don't know too, because dealing with some of our seniors, I know that there's, will be, I will be battling a pride issue.
Mm hmm.
That they don't want this even though they need it. So I'm also trying to figure out a way to go about that. Um, because being in the small communities, we know who those people are, and
Right.
if they refuse to fill one of these out, I feel like there should be another way to help them, you know, so.
Because it's kind of like a little, it's like a gift certificate to them that they can go and spend. Grant doesn't know what they are.
Yeah, yeah, and exactly. It's like, yeah, um, because it's like some of the stuff I've been researching on. I mean, some of these programs are pretty elaborate.
Yeah.
Um, but they even have like an option where you can do like a, like food basket or a like laundry type basket or what, you know, that kind of stuff. And people can donate like seventy-five bucks to have that gift done, or fifty bucks for another one, you know, so there's all kinds of options.
Have you talked about all of the cards? Did they ever do that? Are you still just giving them certificates?
The veggie R X.
Yeah.
Yeah, so no, they're still on vouchers, which we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
Too, so, yeah.
But are they going to switch to cards?
They're trying to.
Okay. Thank you for all your work for senior citizens. It's very, very important. Thank you. Okay, now on the veggie R X. I do want to let you know that um, Sabrina did have a medical issue in her family, so she was not available to get us uh, the information on the upcoming um, subject uh, ahead of time, but she has a request, and I just want to make it that we're comfortable um, with that, even though it wasn't agendaized.
Um, did you guys have a copy of?
This just came today.
Today, probably. It's the agenda briefing.
Yeah. The brief briefing.
Three point four.
Right.
Yeah.
Go ahead and give us the background about veggie R X a little bit, so that our new pensioner understands, and I understand, and.
Does anyone need those? Do you want to read them?
I've got that. I don't have that.
You have? Just give it to not officially. You don't have to read it all.
What the Veggie R X program is, is it's a healthy way to innovate that supports participants and their families with prescriptions to buy healthy fruits and vegetables. The purpose of the Veggie R X program is to promote consumption of fruits, fresh fruits and vegetables for individuals who are determined for food insecurity. The higher cost of fresh fruits and vegetables in frontier counties in Oregon cause families to choose between what is healthy and what will stem the hunger, resulting in higher obesity rates, diabetes, and high blood pressure. The higher cost of housing in frontier and rural Oregon communities also have influenced uh, food insecurities of residents. There is a direct correlation to food, desserts, and food insecurities to level of health in our community. Children experience food insecurities are more likely to have behavioral issues such as anxiety, depression. These kids may also be at risk of developing chronic health conditions, including anemia and asthma. People who are food insecure often have irregular eating patterns, which also lead to being overweight and obese. Additional people facing food insecurities typically consume food with fewer nutrition. So they have dietary shortfall linked to the development of hypertension, diabetes, and other chronic diseases. Um, so what's, I'm on the board of this, and what I've come, what they've come up with is um, the Veggie R X program, we issue like coupon vouchers to families that qualify. Um, and it's for Gillum County, but we've been put on a tighter budget this year. Um, so we went through, and I met with Marcy that is at Gobi um, about this, because they were wanting to um, apply for a different grant. I don't remember now what I said it was. They were wanting to, though, wondering if they could apply for a different money source. But then when I talked to Chris, she recommended that I just come directly to the county court instead of taking away from somewhere else. Um, Marcy McMurphy works for um, to manages the program and is paid by Gobi, which is Greater Oregon Behavioral Health. Per time and travel, printing and shipping of vouchers, administrative costs, and reimbursement of vendors, or the cost of shipping their vouchers for payment is paid by Gobi. Thus, all the funds provided by E O C C O through the Gillum County local community health partner goes directly to support households who have been determined to be food insecure by providing one or two thirty-dollar booklets per month for them to spend at a local vendor. So the local vendor includes like Two Boys or the grocery store in Arlington, and then they can get um, like from the Hans, the produce man when he comes through, so they can use those vouchers there. Um, a family usually can qualify for thirty dollars worth, or so, a total of sixty dollars worth of vouchers. Um, an individual person can qualify for thirty dollars worth of vouchers a month. Um, currently, so it looks like back in twenty eighteen when the program started, the L chip funds were twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty. And today, we were, and twenty twenty-four, they're up to thirty-two thousand eighty-five dollars. Um, so what we are asking is that if the county would consider contributing sixteen thousand two hundred, which would allow us to cover, say, fifteen individual members or fif, or and, and fifteen two-plus member households to continue the program.
So there's more applicants than there is money.
Yes, and I have applicants sitting on my desk that qualify, but I'm out of spaces for the money that they have right now.
Okay.
So Marcy, when we talked about it, she said even like sixteen thousand two hundred would give us enough to do the fifteen individuals and fifteen family.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Um, and then as I look through it, um, because I've only been doing the program years, two and a half, of being the subscriber to it, and it's very heavy on people that are getting the, these vouchers in Condon. And lighter on Arlington end, which I would like to push it out more down there too, so.
So is this just to cover this year or twelve months from now?
Yeah, I mean, that would give them, that would give us more money so that we let people come in now.
Okay, but that would cover, like I say, just the end of this year or into twenty twenty-five?
No, it would go into, it should go into the.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
I did ask the breakthroughs to boys about how it works for them on their end, and they they benefit from the program as well.
Well, and I think the residents too of Gillum County benefit from it because by this money going and being made to be spent in our local county or local towns, then that gives them, where they can order a lot more produce, and the different produce and that kind of stuff, from what I've gathered from it. And I don't like Arlington. I know Marcy was going to go talk to the grocery store down there, because there's always pushback that they don't have everything there, but hopefully, you know, they have listened to it a little bit, and I think maybe if I can get more vouchers down that way, then they would see that people are, like, come in and spend that money there.
Is it just fresh vegetables, or is it frozen as well?
Um, so they could do frozen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And we all know what it costs to go to the grocery store now, so it's expensive.
Yeah.
Um, Commissioner Watkins, did you have, you know more about this than, than we do?
Well, that I'm working on, so I have the mail-out voucher coupons every month, which to me is like a waste of, I mean, because it's expensive to put those in an envelope and mail them, and then just my time to do all that.
Mm hmm.
Um, they, Marcy's been working on getting like a credit card types thing that'll work with the grocery stores. And so I don't know how hard she's gotten with that, but I do know that she's been trying to get that done. Um, so we just keep asking her.
Because my understanding is then they can just reload those cards. They wouldn't have.
And then they wouldn't have to, yeah, and then that would cut out, like I said, a lot of expense with just the.
Mail-in amount. As far as a funding source, we do have an opportunity to spend some COVID money. Um, and food insecurity is a area that we could focus on and, and show that we are utilizing those funds in that way. I think, do we have to spend that money by the end of the year? It either has to be obligated or spent. I think, do we have to spend that money by the end of the year? It either has to be obligated or spent, and I think we can get it spent. I have that in my report, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So you want a motion?
If you're ready.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve uh funding for the frontier veggie RX program in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred.
I will second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to um provide additional funding for the frontier veggie RX program in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda include an I G A for community council solutions. This was a contract that had expired. I communicated with Kimberly Lindsay. It needs to be in place. Um, and it's included in your packet. Also approval of amendment eleven Oregon Health Authority Agreement for Financing of Public Health Services. We see several of those coming periodically throughout the year. Also provided um the actual expenditure, I think we should all be seeing the actual expenditures, not just a report from um of the general finances, just what the bills are, and those will be coming to you every month. Um, and also Gillum County Transportation Plan provided by our Transportation Director. Treasurer's Report, which is just um receiving the report, not approving it, and then it's from the October sixteen, two thousand twenty four meeting. That's it on the consent agenda. So any questions?
No, I'll move to through consent agenda.
Your second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Moving right along. Unfinished business. Uh, the discussion at the last meeting was suggestion and um we feel this like consider holding town hall meetings. What happened um once we started to try to schedule those meetings is um Anya, our assistant, reached out and um dates were a bit problematic, so it was pushed out a little bit further than we originally thought. Um, December is a hard month to have uh meetings with the holidays. Um, so I did get a letter from a constituent and I'll just read that letter. Um, it was to all of us. I don't know if we all had a chance to see it, but it's regarding the town hall meetings and it just says, I see on the, this is from Lindball, Arlington resident. I see on the current agenda that town hall meetings are being looked at to be held in January and February of next year. I am disappointed that it's taken this long. When Gillum County held its successful recall election, do you as a four, feel you were given a clear mandate by the voters? The voters showed an overwhelming seven percent rejection of our previous sports ideology and agenda. If you agree that the voters gave you a clear mandate, would you give me your personal interpretation of just what you think that mandate is? I have a list of interpretations of the mandate. The voters wanted from our new county court and I'm interested in seeing how closely we're aligned. I look forward to having a conversation with each of you regarding this subject. Um, so that related to the town hall, I believe that those mandates are, I hope to hear what those are going to be at the town hall. That's my, my, my goal with the town halls. We also have to remember that two of these county commissioners wouldn't have even taken office until January, so there's been quite a bit of work that we've had to do just to get our feet under us. So that's how I see it. Did you have anything else you wanted to say about the town halls or?
The only thing I would say is um December would have been a horrible time to try to schedule anything. It's bad enough as it is.
And November, we have a week at um Association of Oregon Heights.
And Thanksgiving weekend and yeah, so that was as soon as we could, right, get it scheduled.
Yeah.
I do, I have a concern about, I don't want those town halls just to turn into a roast. I mean, I hope that I, I know we're gonna have some kind of organization or I mean.
Yes. We should have it, I think, facilitated with some guardrails and framework of what um what we'll hear, which to me are going to lead into some goal setting and then the building of our budget and the things we're gonna do in the coming year. And that's, I think if we do it every year, it would be a good way to allow people to to address us and see what they say.
Yeah, because I, I don't think that we need to go rehash the same things that have been rehashed, money and trust.
I agree. Um, you know, my idea on that was to hear from the voters' ideas and uh, you know, hear them out, but uh going forward.
Mm-hmm, right.
And uh, yeah, I'd like to get a copy of that letter too.
Oh, we would.
And the other thing I would say too is, is whenever we set up this date, it would be nice to have some of their, uh, how do I say this? Um, people that are want, have questions or something they wanna get to us, uh, something before the meeting so we can think about it.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, uh.
Ahead of time, have some uh opportunity to comment.
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess if there's some, some questions and and not all, not everybody that's coming to those is gonna submit theirs, but if there's
Okay.
if there's some, like Mr. Ball has some definite points, I guess, that's, I, I guess I would like to know that.
Mm-hmm, right.
Other people, I don't.
Yeah, uh, the dates we were looking at, and I believe Anya reached out to you, is January fifteenth, twenty five, six o'clock P M in Condon and February eleventh, two thousand twenty five, six o'clock P M in Arlington. Do those dates work? Okay.
That worked for me.
Those days will be set for a town hall. The other issue I've, and I will address Mr. Ball, but I, I would like to let him know that it's, it's taken several months just, I think it may have been irresponsible to have a town hall too soon because we were searching for contracts under, learning what, how everything works. Now we know um for the most part how everything functions and we can speak intelligently about what we're doing and um the, the contracts and agreements we have and how the programs actually work.
All right. Um, I love this comment that we have some big projects that we are undertaking and to get too many things.
Yeah.
And you don't do a good job, you're right, at anything.
I agree with you. Yeah, I, I think we do need to be careful with that. Ideas are good, but we're gonna have to manage the projects that we have so that we can cross them off our list and make room for new.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, uh, new business, consider appointment of cultural trust coalition. Okay, six point one.
So we just need to.
Oh, yeah, make a motion. Right, so we have one interested person, Carrie Callen, correct? Okay. Anya dealt with this supposedly. I should allow her to uh to stand on this one, but um, so yeah, she is interested in continuing. So there's a suggested motion in the briefing. Is there a motion?
And I think that this is one of those committees that they really have to reach out. I know Miranda hard struggled with reaching out and trying to find people to serve on it, so.
Yeah, it's a difficult one. Yeah.
I'll, you have any discussion tomorrow?
No.
Kind of either, my question.
Go ahead.
Uh, I move to appoint Carrie Callen to the Gillum County Cultural Trust Coalition effective November sixth, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Carrie Callen to the Gillum County Cultural Trust Coalition effective November sixth, twenty twenty four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. On her? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll notify her. Okay. Right, we now have under new business, consider approval, so we'll have Dewey Kennedy come up. Roadmaster, consider approval of new position assistant, roadmaster. Good morning.
Uh, not that I'm in a hurry to get out of here yet, but I think it's time to uh bring somebody out. And uh, I've already had him helping me with
And her friend John.
Yeah, project admin is uh helping with the budget a little bit this year and stuff. Uh, give him some more responsibility to basically force him to step up a little bit more, let him take the reins. Um, he does a fantastic job, hard worker, smart, always thinking, uh, like in my opinion, that, that's gorgeous.
Okay, good. We have a draft position description for companies. Material. Any discussion about that or the idea in general?
I mean, I like the idea, but um I, I didn't, is, is there a pay increase that will come along with this?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, and I budgeted for it this year.
Okay, do, do we know what that is?
It, it bumps him up to
Um, I think the idea which will process the position description first.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And then, but then it'll have to be improved on the salary schedule.
And then approve the salary schedule at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Right.
We've uh also forecasted that salary schedule, right? You guys should have a copy of that so you can see what that looks like.
You didn't include it because we were just doing it about in front of you today. Uh, but we're gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about it. So one step at a time. Do you have any questions on the position on inscription? Okay, and I do know they do go hand in hand. Um, so do we have a motion to approve the position of description for the assistant roadmaster?
You shouldn't be guarding. About you say me.
I'll move to uh make a motion to approve the road department uh assistant roadmaster position as presented.
Position description, yeah.
Position description.
Mm-hmm. Okay, is there, I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the assistant roadmaster position description um as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Now, we wanna talk about your salary suggestion. I, we will approve it at the next meeting or it's considered at the next meeting, but I didn't wanna get bogged down with
Right.
both things at once because I have some questions.
Hold it till that meeting.
Okay. That'll be
Want to just hold it till next meeting?
Go hold it often?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay.
Okay, so
Please.
We just wanna make sure that it's a proper compensation for the position with pay equity, et cetera. So a little bit, just making sure that we're, we're good with um what we're paying.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
And it won't even be till next budget cycle, um you know, won't be that long out of this budget year. But my question is, is there gonna be a training period? Or would he?
There's, there's really, he's already been returned.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Um, I've discussed it with him, members of the crew.
Mm-hmm.
Um, everybody's great.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So we'll take the rest of the action at the next meeting. Got you. Okay, thank you. All right. And discussed in for paper.
With all the paving, all the work we're doing, uh, the Carlson paper that we purchased three years ago, four years ago, whatever, isn't big enough for the volume of work we're doing. Uh, Western State Cat actually led us demo a machine this year. Uh, we paid a little over fifteen miles with it this year. It took half the work away.
Oh.
As far as labor, stuff like that, it's quieter. It's three times more efficient. Uh, the Carlson paper, we had to fuel it in. If we didn't, we, we ran out. This one will go almost three days on a tank of fuel. It's quiet. Um, as we're paving down the road, I can visit with Brian. We can talk. Where before you had to wear earplugs and stuff with the other one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's just, uh, it's bigger, more powerful, smoother, actually does a better job. Um, and if we're going to continue with our program, we can improve this. I, I think it would be a, a very good addition to our fleet.
Um, can I address the road department administrative assistant and um her research on procurement because this is above the threshold for um procurement, the twenty fifty thousand.
I reached out to Lauren Cooper with
Lauren Cooper is the Gillum County municipal council.
municipal council, just to make sure that we were following the correct you know, parameters for purchasing this. Um, Western State went through Sourcewell and we have a Sourcewell account, so she confirmed that um we didn't, went off to go through a bid process and that was through Sourcewell. And I have a, her emails and
Okay, Sourcewell is a procurement agency. Um, this uh equipment was on that.
And we purchased several pieces of equipment through Sourcewell. Actually, the Carlson paper was purchased through
Okay.
Uh, our excavator, uh, the uh, the new shoulder truck.
Okay. Okay.
It's a, it's, actually it simplifies
Okay.
our purchases for.
Okay, good. Thank you for doing that, Toby.
Everyone. So is it, is our old one worth any thing? I mean
Yes.
Uh, they'll take it.
Yeah.
We'll take it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's part of the net amount.
Oh, gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion?
Um, I had one quick question. So do we, I mean, yeah, I'm sure it's gonna last for quite a while.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's more than five, maybe ten years.
Oh, shit.
Yeah, okay, a long time.
Yeah, as long as it, it's a shot right now, getting clean for next season, um, it's just magnificent.
So it's a good investment.
How long do you have that other one?
Uh, I think three years, three years.
So what do you estimate the life of this one will be?
Uh, Memorial County just, just got their new one last year and they ran there for almost twenty years, the one that they replaced.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, wow. And they went with the size bigger than, than we have. Um, I went uh, small to mid range because of our narrow roads and I'm, I'm glad we did. Um, it barely fit where we needed to. But it's a much easier machine to operate and um a, yeah, it's nice to train on the other one and then go to this and it's, it's amazing the difference.
We have, we do have a budget as well.
Yeah, that's all I know.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion about the paper? Okay.
Uh, I'll move to approve the purchase of the CAT four fifty five paper and the trade in of the Carlson paper as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded to purchase the Carlton paper with the all right, the, the new CAT four fifty five paper with the trade in of the Carlson paper for a net amount of three hundred and sixty four thousand one hundred dollars and thirty six cents. On paper? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I throw a couple of other things?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, uh, Commissioner Williams asked me to, I mean, give an update on the Cedar Springs uh relocation budget. Uh, I reached out to uh, two different engineering firms to help me with the process. Um, I got a a document that I was able to uh put our information in online. Um, we'd like to send it into legal to make sure that everything's right. Um, Jolie and I, we made adjustments to it to fit our project and
So that's the RFP for the engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
And so we're ready to go to legal, get the document back, and then we can, we can try to get firms to bid on the, on the project.
Good.
Good, good.
I concur with that. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Go ahead and send that to legal.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, and then on that, uh, that award that we're gonna receive, uh, I reached out to uh Troy Kendall. Blue light says, you know, is this something we should attend, not knowing that he had already nominated us for this award. He said, yeah, for sure, go to it. We went down, Ryan and I went down to it. We walked into a room full of engineers, project managers and uh material suppliers, basically, this. When Troy, he, he made the pitch and everything, we were When Troy, he, he made the pitch and everything, we were unanimous. Winners of the award, because we're, right now, we're the experts. Nobody does one hundred percent coal plant recycling now.
Wow.
Uh, so there's a lot of people looking at what we do.
Wow.
Um, I have a professor from Auburn University wants all of our data.
Oh.
I said, well, it's all up here. They couldn't have it. Data, so, you know, we just, we just do the work, but they are, uh, uh, they're amazed at what we do. There's millions of tons of rap piled. And a lot of these companies are being fined because it's an ice ore.
Wow.
And they're trying to figure out ways to get rid of it. And so, um, we're probably gonna have some visitors.
Mm-hmm.
And lots of phone calls, lots of stuff, but that, um, yeah, I plan to go and march to get the award and I have to do a presentation of what we do, so.
Good, you'll have to get Julie to help you.
Yeah, yes, she will.
Good. Congratulations and thank you. Give me a PowerPoint one.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. You did that. Um, after we get it put together, um, I'd like to present it to the, to the board and to the road committee.
Right.
Uh, so then.
Good, when, when do you go?
March third.
Okay.
March third.
All right, and then somewhere in California?
Yeah.
Okay.
On spring?
So we're in there.
Okay.
Hmm, wait now.
Okay.
Good.
Hey, great.
Where it's warm.
Yeah.
It's pretty hot. Thank you so much.
Uh.
Anything else?
Uh, the team's working good.
Uh-huh.
We're grading. Uh, we got everything done. Uh, Jolie and I are in the process of getting our bill out of Brookfield for the repair on railroad and also a bill to Avangrid for their part of the new paving on, uh, on, um, Autoborough at Weatherford. So it's, it's been a, it's been a very busy summer.
So you'll communicate with our treasurer about that money coming in?
Yes. Yeah.
Correct.
Cause remind me what we get out of Avangrid this time?
Three hundred thousand.
Okay.
Three hundred thousand, yeah.
She was better than what they were.
It's better one than their original offer.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, there's, there's a couple of other projects and development going on and stuff like that, um, dealing with them and, and, uh, both of those projects, it, it hinges on, uh, I call it the Barnett Bridge, the Rock Creek Schoolhouse.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that bridge is low limit.
Mm-hmm.
So Gillum County might receive a bridge from somebody else.
Cool.
Because, uh, you know, I, I will submit the bridge for the, the, uh, replacement with the state, state and federal funds. But we're up against, um, all the big metropolitan county. You know, we have sixteen bridges, some of them have sixteen hundred bridges.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Uh, you know, I said, well, you know, we're not gonna bridge it.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe if the two developers can get together and do that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And possibly maybe anything out of that, that would be awesome. Well.
I like what you're thinking.
Okay.
Very work, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Jed, sorry to keep you waiting so long. The others gotta go early and you have to wait. Okay, you were here today because you have to a, um, request for grant extension for the Port of Arlington.
Go ahead. Thank you. We have two large capital projects that are going well. Uh, well, first is the Alkali Ridge Infrastructure, it's a forty acre subdivision in Arlington. That's a, a joint project that we, uh, the county court uh, helped transfer from a rural project to this one. And the county court awarded one point two million in March of twenty twenty-four. So it hasn't been a year yet. We're well underway with the engineering design. We anticipate project bids soon and construction work received February through May of twenty twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And for that reason, we would need to extend the, the grant uh, beyond, you know, rather than expiring here at, at year end, it, it would need to continue.
Same timeline, December thirty-first, twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you wanna have those separately or together, maybe, um, got any questions on, on that one?
I do, I have a question. Is this still workforce housing? Is this still what the idea is?
Yes, the, the grant application was submitted specifically for the infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
Because the port's role is more of a facilitator to help create those lots that will be marketable to home builders. So our, the port's role is more of that infrastructure role.
Okay.
Not to dominate the private industry, let them thrive.
Mm-hmm.
But this grant money helps to buy down the cost of those lots to be able to make them more marketable to the builders to come in and build workforce housing.
Okay. Uh, just go ahead and go on into the grade school project and then if anybody else has questions about.
Okay.
Either project, they can ask.
Uh, former Conan Grade School is a two, two-phase project where there's two distinct actions. The first is environmental remediation. It'll be followed by redevelopment. So, and this is an older award where we, we made it clear upfront that we were hoping to seek state and federal funding for the environmental portion. And so we kind of parked the award from the county trying to reserve those funds for redevelopment. And lo and behold, we were successful with an EPA award for the remediation for environmental work. And we've got a work plan, uh, consistent with all the federal requirements that go with, with that EPA award. So what we were hoping to do is have another extension on the on the redevelopment award for Conan Grade School. That would necessitate another extension.
Okay.
One, one thing that helps with that is by the time you apply for all those federal grants and you, you note pledged funding associated with that, it's, it's difficult to unravel the, that plan that's been solid all along, right from the start. It, it's hard to unravel that with EPA awards. And so it, it would be much simpler if we can extend that award. Um, there will be a series of outreach meetings as we proceed with the environmental cleanup and community meetings that are required by EPA. And so we'll have a good process there to keep people informed. I know it's been a a long time coming, but it's been, you know, we've been diligent to obtain that federal funding and and reserve county funding for redevelopment
Mm-hmm.
with a goal of, of workforce housing expansion. Some of those classrooms could be converted into apartments. We've done structural analysis to, to prove up on that, um, that possibility as well.
Mm-hmm. Building structure sound?
For, for the most part, there's, uh, some of this will hinge on how much of the, you know, how much of the stucco or the tile has to get broken up to do the environmental remediation. So we, we don't have a for sure design plan on the, on the classroom conversion.
Mm-hmm.
But we'll make some more informed choices as we see how the how the cleanup goes.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh, Jed, have you guys received, has the port received any of the grants yet that you have listed here?
Yes, we received state brownfield awards of sixty thousand and twenty-five thousand.
Okay, and that was, that was, okay, I see the dates here, okay?
Yes.
And then this year, the seven eighty?
The, the seven eighty, they, they did the pre-award May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. We submitted all the paperwork that goes with formally being, uh, given the award. Uh, we expect that any day.
Okay.
The formal agreement. And the fund period for that would be for two years, a federal reporting cycle. But the actual work should be done by next October, twenty twenty-five.
So you say two years, will they give you so much upfront, or is it gonna be one month some?
No, we, we put it into specific quarters with most of it upfront when the actual work is.
Okay. I was just curious.
I don't think there's any, I think all, all of it is in the first year, we expect to draw from that seven hundred eighty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And what that would do is then next fall, be able to dovetail and use the county, county award together with funding that Avangrid contributed to that project as well.
Right.
So trying to seek those those, um, funding sources.
Okay. So any other questions about this grant extension? For their two grants?
Uh, no, I, I moved to approve the Alkali Ridge Infrastructure Grant and the grant for the former Conan Grade School. Do we need to read the amounts on?
Yeah.
Um, just with the.
And just extend that, them to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, extend the Alkali Ridge Infrastructure Grant for the Port of Arlington, um, as well as the former Conan Grade School grant to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Please step for the Gillum lease extension as well.
That'd be fine. I see that, um, victim's assistance present as well. Don't, don't.
She just probably looking up.
Uh, the excited on the agenda is six point seven.
Thanks.
Um, consider Gronkis Building Lease Extension Room One, which is the Gillum County Office Space. That's the, as you walk into the building, it's the first, the first room on the right, and then Room Three, which is a victim office space. Um, our assistant Anya Monday has prepared a spreadsheet with all of our agreements and contracts. And there may have been one, I just couldn't find one when I, when I came. So we created one and some things we found were some grant agreements that had expired. Uh, so these were two that, that happened.
Lease agreements.
Yeah, sorry, lease agreements. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's all it is, is, and, uh, for April is to sync with, well, all I'm speaking of.
I, I just wanted to sync with, it, it's paid through September of twenty-five. And I just wanted it to sync with my grant schedule because that's how I pay, that's the funds that pays for the rental. And so, um, and my grant runs from September, October to September. So that's what.
Okay.
September and October.
Mm-hmm. So hers is a year and a half extension and reading one is a one-year extension.
Very discussion?
So among us, is there a reason why we're only just doing it for one year?
Um, well, we were just getting on track with, um, because it had been expired and we were just getting on track with the way that it had been renewed. So there probably isn't a reason. Um, I think it should be more than one year.
To longer term. If that's what you.
I mean, we. If we go a little longer, we're gonna say, we won't have to keep doing it, won't have to keep going back to an eternity.
Right. Okay, so we wanna make it a two-year for the Room One.
Except for.
So, um.
That's just grants that you want to sync with?
We, right, and so I have this is, is paid for through next year and then I would have another biennium. So my grants run through a biennium instead of just a year by year. So wow, it'd be perfect if I could go for a three-year, but that's up to you guys.
So we could go till September of next year and then go two years after that.
Yeah.
Right. To get it in sync.
To get it in sync, you could do it that way.
Yeah.
Okay. If you, if you'd like, we can put a renewal provision within there where you, you do a year and a half plus a two-year extension.
Okay, I've seen everyone's like that. Yeah. Okay, so what we could do then is approve as presented with the amendment of a renewal extension for, um, and which on, it is on term to be determined.
For the one, for Room One, because I think the one, the other one is okay.
That's the one.
I think on Room Three.
Room three.
And I think yours is okay. Isn't it? Yeah.
You just, I don't know what.
So we only need to.
That's, that's mine because I put in for, I mean, I put in for a grant. Uh, it would be next year that I rewrite my grants and then put in for those.
So we'll just worry about the way it is renewed right now through September of twenty-five as written, but for Room One, we can have, um, uh, yeah, an additional term of two years could be renewed for. Does that make sense? Jed?
Yeah, that's.
Okay. All right.
So I'll move to approve the. Yeah, but. I'll move to approve the Gronkis Lease Extension from Gillum County Court with the amended two-year to twenty twenty-six. And then I'll move, so I'll do that.
Right.
For Room Three, right?
It doesn't say that, but yeah.
I'm, I mean, I would like it to be that. If there was an extension, that would be great. You'd have to go back to it. They'll be all the same.
Keep them, yeah.
We have to.
I was trying to think.
We have to do one at a time.
Yeah.
We're just, we're just doing the one, the one at this time, the Room One.
Right?
Okay.
I was, I was thinking when you guys were talking, so I'm sorry I missed some of the conversation, but if I could, if I could have the same extension as them, um, that would be great. Then it'd be all the same.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I might be mixing you up too.
So it was, so basically it's going to twenty twenty-five with the, you know, if everything is going good, it'll just automatically extend for another couple of years.
Hmm. Okay.
I say the same price, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I moved to approve the Gronkis Building Lease Extension for Gillum County Court, Room One. Um, to amend it to twenty twenty-six. Date with, I don't know, a rolling clause, I don't know what you wanna call it.
Renewal.
It's renewal final clause.
Yeah.
I will second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, and I moved to approve the Gronkis Building Lease Extension for Gillum County Victims Assistance Room Three to and with a rolling clause or whatever you wanna call it. Um, extension and clause.
I'll second the motion.
Additional two years.
I'll second the motion.
Then moved and seconded. You clarify? Yeah, so are you, we're gonna be running through September twenty-five with the two-year renewal?
Yeah, is that with an extension?
An extension possible too. I just wanna get the month, right?
Yeah, right, okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Kind of come.
I didn't receive the month either. Okay.
And I will say the, the Ford attorney prepared those extensions. I'll just have her add in the, the two-year um, renewal.
Yeah.
Feature that you just approved.
So we have a motion to have a second?
Second the motion.
Okay, so, um, it's been moved and seconded to extend, uh, the victim's assistant, Room Three. Um, grant agreement, excuse me, lease agreement through September of twenty-five with an optional two-year extension from that date. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jed.
This is our part, you know, it's mine. Okay. Um, six point eight. Select FEMA Pre-Implementation Compliance Measure Pick'em. Stephanie Kates Planer, are you there, Stephanie?
I am here. Good morning.
Hello. I'll go ahead and allow you to address the county court and the audience, um, regarding this. Um, just give a little background so everybody has a little bit of understanding, um, about this, how it came to be and what we need to do to take that.[1788.31]
Yeah, no problem. I don't want to take a whole lot of your time today. So I included a presentation um and I mean, I don't really have to share it. I really wanted to do it for your information. I know it was included in the packet. So uh folks in the community could see it. Um, really to just summarize it, um, all of this started fifteen years ago. And it accelerated this last year after FEMA sent notification to the affected jurisdiction saying that we needed to do something, we needed to ask. And so what's happening now is before December first, uh, affected jurisdictions, including Gillum County, need to select a pick 'em quote unquote, which stands for pre-implementation compliance measure. And that measure, it's an interim measure while um FEMA is going through the process for uh the NEPA review um with the intent that FEMA would reach full implementation in or around twenty twenty seven. Um, so. I in the presentation that I had, um, I outlined the different options, including the model ordinance, permit by permit and the prohib- prohibition of all new development that FEMA is asking for one of us, for us to make a choice on one of them. Um, after reviewing our options. Um, and considering other. Uh, implications in Gillum County, including uh the uh current modernization of the flood insurance rate maps that Gillum County is going through, which is also anticipated to be completed in twenty twenty seven. Um, staff would recommend um that Gillum County. Um. Select uh permit by permit, um, which would require that habitat assessment and mitigation plans. Um. Happen with each new development. Uh, until the uh final implementation from FEMA and the firm map modernization project is completed. And then I think at that time, Gillum County um could go through and identify what we would like to see in our ordinance, whether it be a model code or um choose our own clear and objective no net loss standard. So for the interim and for the purpose of the December one deadline from FEMA, that would be staff's recommendation is to follow the permit by permit. And so I welcome any discussion.
Okay. Have any questions, commissioners? Um. We sat in on a. Call about this with Parliament Plankton Stephanie. Any myself a month, couple months ago. So they gave us a pretty good understanding of of this. And um. I'm happy to hear you recommending a permit by permit. I think that no development issue is just one of those things that people just don't like to hear, whether or not. There isn't a lot of development in the flood flood plain outside of the cities in Gillum County, period. There really isn't, but um. Yeah, in 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 the flood plain at all or outside. Um, so but permit by permit is going to make people feel more comfortable. And I think it's the right thing for us to do, but. Do you have any questions, Stephanie, about this?
I I would just, I would probably prefer permit by permit.
I do. Who's approving those permits? The planning commission?
Mm-hmm.
Planning commission. Okay, the planning commission. Those go to the planning commission, is that correct? Um, Stephanie?
It's not really clearly lined out within our code, but uh I think that if there was something that came in that was affected in uh by these specifically, so this is all within the special flood hazard area, which there is limited space um anyhow, but I would push it to the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
Just so that way they can review the um plans that are submitted by the applicant. Um, the habitat assessment, any mitigation plan and. It would be available for public view.
Okay, is there any other thoughts or questions of Stephanie before we. Propose a motion? There's been a suggested motion in that room.
I mean, I'll move to authorize staff to notify FEMA and implement the selection of permit by permit. Pre-implementation compliance measure during the NEPA review process.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to authorize staff to notify FEMA and implement the selection of permit by permit, pre-implementation compliance measures during the review process. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Stephanie, for all you do.
Thanks for all you guys do too.
Thank you. Okay, um, we're going to make one more switch to the agenda. I apologize for the woolery, but we have one more um person who just has some standard business to take care of and I'll allow her to go ahead of you and be on her way, Christine. Oh, yes. We're gonna move you up. Okay. Come on out. What we have on this is a uh opportunity to apply for emergency resilience grant. And Chris Fitzsimmons, Emergency Manager, has uh proposed. From that case, the county court. Go ahead.
So um you were given, I think, just a copy of the um. The scope of.
Scope of work.
Yeah, scope of work. Um, so the Oregon Department of Energy has um come out and given generously, given each county fifty thousand dollars um to um have each county put together an energy resilience plan. And so the Maquette. Um, was approached by Hood River County um to do one for Hood River, Wasco and Sherman. And then they decided to call me up and say, hey, you want to join the crowd? So I'm like, sure, I'm, anybody wants to put, I'm not a planner, hate doing planning. Um, so I'm like, um, yeah, sure. So they sent me all the paperwork and um here we are uh with the scope of work of what Maquette um wants to do to put together a four county regional um energy plan. Um, and I will say that they had a meeting on Monday. Um, and ODOE would be sending um two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, well, Hood River County actually was going to be meeting yesterday as well. We're waiting to hear for sure that they would be the lead county and they would be the fiscal county. Um, but they also met on Monday and I think in the scope of work, there was a budget. And that budget didn't show because now they changed a little bit. And I I do have an updated budget and I made five copies. To update the budget that was um. Um. They decided to send nine thousand dollars down to each county. So uh, here's what's for Anya. Um. To to send nine thousand dollars to each county for um just EM costs of of, you know, of of us attending meetings and um. Uh, yeah, nine thousand per county. And they put some eight thousand dollars into some GIS downtime. So this is more of a, this is an updated budget that they came up with on Monday. Um. Yeah, so that's where we're at.
But that total was two hundred thousand for all the counties, right?
Yeah, it's for, yeah, because ODOE is um giving fifty thousand.
Hood River, Wasco, Sherman and cost.
Uh, uh, yeah, it's Hood River, uh, Hood River, Wasco, Sherman.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's kind of like an original original approach with each of us getting our own uh fuel plan, which kind of like is an appendix, appendix to the actual regional plan.
Okay.
So, yeah. And you know, it's like funny because Lindsay Bupur, who is who would be doing this for Maquette, which is who Michelle Colby went to work for, if y'all remember when uh Michelle left us. Um, she works for Maquette now, but Lindsay actually runs a um energy um resilience group out of Hood River County right now. And so she's very um aware of the energy resilience plan and everything um that Hood River County does. She um is just, when I tell her about the natural gas pipeline that runs right through Gillum County and nobody can take, nobody, you know, nobody uses it, we have no access to it. And she's just, she just is like totally, she's like blown away.
Too, too light.
Yeah, and um she's just like that, it's just weird and I'm like, yeah, sure is. So anyhow, it's a lot of different things going on and um. So anyhow, she, I think is the one that would be doing a lot of the planning uh through Maquette for all of this stuff.
It was an opportunity to work with Maquette if we want to down the road do that. Um, so I think this might be really timely. Um, so and if you're recommending to do this.
Yeah, I, like I said, I um, it was just a phone call that Charles Young, he's my cohort in uh the river. He's the EM there and I, he spoke highly of Lindsay um with Maquette. I've never worked with Maquette, um, but um. We really, it's, it's no, no money out of our pocket to really, um. And actually, it's putting nine thousand dollars into covering my expense and or whoever it is, you know, if I can't make the meeting, then I can send Jolie, you know, or whatever. Or if we have any expenses um that we, you know, then, you know, we're getting nine thousand dollars sent to us out of it. So, um, yeah, so anyhow, really, it's, I I don't see any expense to us to come out with a plan for us, so.
You're okay being the lead?
Yeah.
Contact.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, in fact, I've already actually done a lot um in the past. Um, you know, been here for, since God was created. Um, um, uh, Deanna Henry was the emergency planner for the Oregon Department of Energy. And I have a lot of um uh research already done as far as um like how many gallons of fuel and stuff like that that um like our road department would need in the time of a disaster and how much um our local gas stations go through and like who has backup power and who doesn't? And just different things like that. So got a lot of that um background already done. Um, yeah, so.
That's some of the questions I have, but.
Yeah, yeah, so um I'll be able to give a lot of that stuff to Lindsay already because um ODOE likes to have, wants some of that type of stuff. Um, yeah, so it'll be, it'll be good to have some of that stuff put into a a plan like that and uh get it all together.
Okay, and hopefully next year we'll get into again.
Yeah.
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 Right.
And I think that, you know, it all comes from, I I don't, not sure where all of our fuel sources come from, if it comes all from the Portland area, you know? And so if we can't get it from Portland and.
Pasco.
Pasco, yeah.
Okay, there's a fuel truck that comes through every morning at six o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
But you think he goes to John Day?
Yeah.
So. Um, I move to approve the county energy resilience program application cohort for Hood River, Wasco, Sherman and Gillum County as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Did you have anything, any other discussion?
No, I just thought the only thing we might add is that Chris Fitzsimmons is the Gillum County Court Director or Lead. I don't want to do that.
Okay.
Or Director.
Okay, um, it's been moved and seconded, we'll address it back in one minute. We'll just include that in a minute.
That's fine.
I move to approve. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Gillum County uh Energy Resilience Program Application Cohort for Hood River, Wasco, Sherman and Gillum County as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. And Chris Fitzsimmons will be the county lead on this grant. I think we noted that because she said it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Consider Cycle One Capital Investment Grant Applications and Recommendations. Um, Brooklyn, are you there?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, I do want to address a note we received from Julius Courtney yesterday regarding the woolery. So I don't know if this is still timely, but it says it was a request to postpone the decision on the grant for the woolery because they're working with Greg Smith. Are you still requesting that?
Yeah.
Um, so uh. Gives good chance to get state funding, that's what the note says. Um. So I just wanted to discuss that among us first and decide how we want to proceed with that application. Do you have any thoughts about postponing it until the next meeting or?
I'm okay with them postponing it until they they're, might have some more information.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we could go ahead and approve the other one.
Okay, all right, so we will postpone your consideration until the next meeting. Want to clarify? That the, will the next meeting be enough time for you? So you have your information together and that's not going to be until December fourth?
Actually, I have a paper here I'd like to give you then.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right.
We just have the one meeting.
Yeah, we only have one meeting in November.
And I, and I would suggest if you secure that funding, that you resub- resubmit or update your um application.
Application.
It may make a difference on.
Okay. All right.
That's going to be very difficult to do. When we handed in all the information that was asked.
Uh-huh.
From your group.
Mm-hmm.
We had it in thirty pages.
Mm-hmm.
I don't mind. I don't think there's anything else we can add. We were asked for that input, I believe, on a Friday. Okay? And it had to be here by Sunday morning. Okay, we had to hire a guy with our uh.
Grant writer.
The grant writer. That's highways for a whole weekend and then he gets that information in here.
Okay.
And we've never received any uh word by that grant. Was uh recommended to not be used.
Okay.
And I think that, and it's in my, you know, children, I think the program will talk about a building, this is not just another building. We've got other buildings. But this is inheritance. That's our plan. And it's uh, the recorded history of all of the sheep herders and and the weak over here to throw the wine and fall and having fun. And. I request or uh offer to take the people from that group. I wanted to welcome Steve that side.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, I received your agreement.
Okay. Um. Just a second, do we have question? Please.
Whether or not. We'll get it on the front.
Okay, I see, okay. All right, um.
But my question is, can we all sit down? The the county court representative from Arlington, from the city council. You shared a whole there this morning for possibility of alert from the city council. Um, recommending that. We're going to have a different.
Well. Well, we're going to postpone, I just want to clarify, we're going to postpone the whole discussion until the December fourth meeting. And we can have that discussion there. And one idea I have with some, with our big grants is I think it might be uh useful to have people actually do present to us rather than um exclusively going through the recommendation of of the committee exclusively. And I think committee members may agree with this as well, um, just so that we hear it with our own ears, especially on these big projects. So that's just a thought I have. We haven't discussed it among ourselves, it's not going to be happening um this, this year because we have our process in place, but we will discuss anything, take any public input that wants to be given at the December fourth meeting. On, on your application. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's where, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so the other application we have and recommendation from the grant committee is um for the Elks Lodge. Trying to get to that. And that is, Brooklyn, did you want to address that one or did you just want me to to summarize? That one?
Um, you can, you can summarize or I can, either way.
Okay. Okay, this application for the Elks Lodge is for, sorry, forget to let, get to the second section.
Review the kitchen?
Yeah, it's for their kitchen and it's fifty two thousand five hundred dollars. And the recommendation was to fully fund that. Application. Is there any other questions? I will say that they are a nonprofit because there's documentation in there that says. I will say that they are a nonprofit because there's documentation in here that says they are.
Because that is all the file for the charitable, whatever you call it.
It says 501(c)(8) nonprofit.
Yeah, they, they fall actually under the national.
Right. They've already discussed it about this application. I actually read through both of them. I think. Demolition, frame and shoot raw, install equipment, project cleanup afterward. Yes. I moved to approve the capital investment grant for a cycle one of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. The Condon Elks Lodge, the amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred. For a second?
I will second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the cycle one fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five capital investment grant application on an Elks Lodge in the amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And we'll go ahead and vote.
Bye.
Hi. Motion Perry's. And I guess we're just noting that we are. And we will table, yes, we will table the Woolery application until December fourth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. I wanted to go back to the email from Jeff Shaw regarding the floodplain update, the mass for the floodplain. Jeff had provided some information to us and there's an email in our that states, he has some recommendations. I want to make sure you're comfortable with us carrying those recommendations forward to FEMA because we have till November twenty-second to comment on those. And one of his main concerns is that they share the industrial park as, yes, the Teller Station Industrial Park, one to six inches of water.
It's hard, hard to imagine, but.
Yeah, and he just says for economic development, that of future, we should try to address that with, with our mapping.
So is it on the side that has all the buildings or on the opposite side?
That has all the buildings.
Yeah. So it's not the one side of the road?
Right, or east side.
East side, yeah.
Right. Are you comfortable with that? I just didn't, we don't necessarily need a motion. I just wanted to make sure I didn't do that without help with you.
Yeah, I don't think we wanted to just slide by.
Yes, okay. Well, we will address it with FEMA then. Comment. Or ask him to assist us, one of the two. Okay. Again, we're not having a second meeting and no confirm. Want to make sure we're all aware of that. Our next meeting will be December fourth here in Condon. Anything from the commissioner that's just going on?
Nope. Just plan on going to ALC. Are you going down?
I don't know when I'm going, but I'm going to be there.
So what, which, is it Monday night that they have the government women's?
Okay, and I think I didn't, what's, what's not going to work that Monday? I can't remember what I signed up for. Yeah, I'm not. No, I did a new, a new commissioner.
The orientation the next morning.
Yeah. That's good. I thought I'd learn what's going on first and then next year, we are going to share a table with Sherman County for that. We have some things that we got to add to that. Okay, so, yeah. That's on Thursday.
Yeah, I think they were trying to dial down that. I think that's what everybody likes about it.
No, well, I've been having coffee from Bobby's Joe. I got some, and I got some bread from Bingo's Place and I'll make and some decorations and stuff, so. All right, great.
I think I have a November fourteenth Norcore meeting. They, I had it scheduled for kind of in the time of the.
ALC?
The ALC. So anyway, as far as I know, it's on for the fourteenth. I have a post-op for cataract surgery that morning in Hood River, but I should be able to make it back to Norcore that day. Sounds like it's going to be a pretty big meeting. I know that they're worried about the budget, like I've mentioned. So it sounds like it's going to be fairly long meeting that day and it was kind of, they're waiting to see what's going to happen with Wauaco County. There was a big school bond and I didn't see it this morning, but.
If it was, it wasn't the Columbia Board's meeting, college?
It wasn't the college. I thought it was a school one too. But anyway, they're still leaning towards, I think, possibly a taxing district. But anyway, I'll attend that and then.
You mean for that Narcore?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on the nineteenth, before the ALC starts, if you could, I won't be able to attend that, but Priya's having a pre-meeting down there.
Okay. I, I was, I think I'm going to go to the Priya meeting down there because I don't have anything to do. Give her that. I think it's the same time as the new commissioner orientation.
Oh, okay, perfect. I was, thank you.
I was going to go to it. And I think they actually sent me. I think I'm the backup.
Yeah, Mike just sent, I think I got that not too long ago.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it was before, yeah, it was before the ALC started. So, I mean, it's supposed to be writing, you can write with it, I guess.
Yeah, I think it, from what I remember, it starts like, does it start at nine thirty?
I think so, something like that. And if you don't have that, if that doesn't have all the information, I think I just printed the email that was sent to me. But if it's not all there, let me know.
I have the little app on my phone that has all the. So did you have anything else?
No, I just, I can't make the.
Okay.
Wish I could go, but I just, we're tied to work right now.
Winding up your, your work, so.
Hopefully, I'll know I dropped a date hopefully for my full-time job within the next month and a half.
Good, good. What I have is Anya has, because she quickly saw a. A B M engagement. Sorry, that's okay, because she was able to respond quickly. We, I think we have scholarships for the county college for grant and I would say we can have two thousand dollars. So that's good. That was all her. We're in a holding pattern with oven grid regarding a potential SIP negotiations that they asked us to hold off for a month or so. What they said was parts, maybe delay. On the repower, I'm leading Gen number two. Broadband fiber project, Pacific Core, I, we, we're working on that just as of this morning, getting a response from them and talking with them about their insurance requirements on their full setting agreement, which is vastly different than what we, our insurance covers. So we're working through that. The county system, there's been weekly meetings with Cassell to go live in the county system by twenty twenty-five, January twenty twenty-five. The fiscal audit, which has been a tremendous amount of work and teamwork with our finance director and treasurer to prepare the audit. But it's, it's there and it was, it's a huge amount of work and I commend them both for all they did to get us where we are. We also have an additional audit starting next week or the week following. And that is a specific audit, upper end of audit, which we welcome. It was ordered by the prior administration and it will be underway and there will be a report, report provided to the county court by December thirty-first. And the estimated cost of that audit is around sixty-five hundred dollars, in case anybody was wondering what that would be. Very narrow scope of work, so it's not. They're looking for specific. Uh, let's see, some of the things we talked about here, attended a housing code meeting in Arlington on the twenty-second, a safety committee meeting on the twenty-first, a FEMA review, floodplain review meeting on the twenty-second of October. Attended a trade fair in Arlington. There's a virtual equipment simulator where kids could use an excavator and learn about the trades and what it would take to get into an apprenticeship program and talk to people who are actually in it. So it was a very good, very good trade fair at Arlington High School. And there was kids from Condon Spray Fossil and I own there. We did Halloween here in Trick or Treat Main Street, had fun last Thursday with the kids. And then we took our show on the road to Arlington and did Trick or Treat there too, so. A lot, oh, I'm going to go to the Columbia Basin Electric Annual Meeting tomorrow, or either of you.
I was thinking about the third little launch thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's at the Owl Club. Much of this month, it's been working on figuring out this arc of funding. It's the state and local fiscal recovery funds, figured out the reporting, talk to other counties. I just want to make sure that the money has to be obligated if it's not spent. But what I found out was, okay, let me tell you, originally, I think the plan was to use it for fiber. And then the fiber grant came and we couldn't use any, we couldn't expend anything without threatening the possibility of that grant. So nothing could be applied for fiber. Then the early learning center was one of the other projects that was included and we have spent money on the engineering on the early learning center expansion. So those have been reported.
The Rocket meetings, they.
And the Rocket. The thing about the Rocket, there was some expenses that were not included because there was something with the tax ID number that didn't get reported. So I'm going to try to find out if we could include some of those back expenses. But because.
They asked for, in between the recall and that, they asked for a number and I didn't come, provide them a number.
But there was prior expenses in a prior report that didn't get, but, and they still work out.
Okay.
We'll find out. So that we can get all the Rocket, all the engineering for the.
Because we needed a number from them.
Yeah, right. It says, I think they rejected the, rejected some expenses. So the total amount of money was three hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars. The other expense that was included was part of the HVAC at Norcore. I think all the counties went together and put money in and that was sixty-five hundred dollars. So we're just making sure that we expend that, which we can do without having to obligate the money because if you receive ten million dollars or less, you can put, put it in for revenue replacement, revenue loss, I think it's called revenue loss. And you don't have to prove revenue loss. If you receive more than ten million dollars, you have to prove revenue loss. So in other words, we could use it for in qualifying expense and we could just use it straight out of our budget. So law enforcement, some places that we use like EMS, things like that, that were a part of their, their own, their own staff, I guess. So law enforcement, equipment, software. The other thing I would really like to focus on or try is the whole food insecurity issue, the veggie RX, the meal sites, the money we've given to Arlington Health. And if we use that, I think it really does tie into COVID, the times of COVID and who we were trying to help. The other thing we could potentially use it for is expenses we've already incurred this year. And that is the sheriff's office, office expansion, because that creates, creates distance and more space and our office expansion. So we're going to be able to use the money. I just wanted you to know what I'm thinking. I don't want to get in there.
Let me ask you a question. When we did the extra money that we gave Arlington Health in January, they had all the frozen pipes and all the problems and that, that potentially could have come out of those funds. Can we go back and?
I think, I'll look into that. The same question as with the Rocket money we did. So see if we can amend a prior report to include more. But, so we don't have to return any of that money. And, but if you get into picking a project, that's what we did before. I don't want to risk it not getting done and then picking a project that's extra. I even, we even looked into the sidewalk at the library to see if that, because paths to schools is one of the things they wanted to fund. And it's not going to be, we can't get a contract and have it obligated at any time. So I think this will be fine. It's just good that we are thinking about it now. And I just want to make sure you're, you know, what's going on with that. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. That was most of, of what we did. Extra, extra time this month was we trying to figure that out myself. And then there's another pot of money called local tribal funding that's part of the COVID money. There's a hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars as well. And the deadline on that is until twenty-eight. It can be used on anything but lobbying, so. We just need to get them earmarked. That's all I have. Okay?
Okay.
Any other business?
The, oh, Kelly Nonprofiting had sent me a summary and they are going to have a report on what so far, how everything's been going with all the entities they're helping and then a bill was sent in, so.
Okay, but she was working on that, so. Right, okay. I have one thing that I kind of forgot about. So to this afternoon at two o'clock, we have a webinar about the, so the hazard. Because of the fires, the Lone Rock Fire, there's like Wheeler, Gillon and Morale Counties are, there's a bunch of money coming down the pipe for the hazard mitigation grant, which is the H, they call it HMGP. So I have hazard mitigation grant program. So after a, it's a long story, but yeah, after you get a conflag and then you get an FMAN, which is the fire mitigation assistance grant, then it follows up with the HMGP program, which is the hazard mitigation side of it. So as long as you have a signed off natural, natural mitigation hazard plan, which is what we just finished up with our five-year update, you can apply for this money. And there's money coming because of the Lone Rock Fire. So we have at two o'clock the webinar for a pre-application talk that didn't open up Friday. And it's due at the end of the month. But this pre-application is only two pages. And it's just a really down and dirty pre-app that says, what are you thinking about applying for? And what are your applicant, what, what are your projects type of thing? Again, we're talking mitigation projects. So this is where I talked about maybe getting a generator on the new event center out of the fairgrounds because the fairgrounds are used for shelter reunification, fire-based camp and stuff like that. And I talked to Jeff Shaw about making sure that the event center is wired for the generator. But if I can get the generator through the HMGP. And, but the other problem is that the HMGP program is seventy-five, twenty-five MAP. So no matter what, only, and the only eligible applicants are, are the counties, cities, special districts and nonprofits that are located in those three counties. I shouldn't say only three counties. Those three counties have higher, what do you call it? Higher chances first to get the money. And then if we don't apply and whatever money's left over, then the rest of the state can start applying for that money as it, as it comes in. So my question to you right now is, on the two-page pre-application, I know that you guys don't meet again until December. So I, but, so.
You run it maybe some authorization?
Yeah, because I don't, because right now, I don't even have a clue what the estimate's going to be. Of what the, what a backup generator, well, just put it this way, without knowing what this webinar is going to be this afternoon, number one, I don't even know what kind of projects are eligible until I meet with them. Because I also know that I've got public works departments in Arlington and Condon that don't have portable radios to talk to anybody. So that was another project that I was going to ask, ask them this afternoon would be eligible. Because through our exercises that we've had, I found out that our public works departments, city public works departments can't talk to anybody because of our digital radio program. So that's another project that I would like to go for through the Gillon County number one. So there's a lot of different projects that I'm going to ask about this afternoon. But then, but then this is the deal, November, like I said, pre-application is due. But then the, the sub-application is January and they give us three months. It's January, February, March. It's, it's January through March. So do you want to know now or do you want to wait until the January sub?
I think we wait.
Okay, that's because then when I reach out in January, then that's when I'm going to be narrowing, narrowing that gap.
What do you think?
Yeah. Yeah, wait. Because of that seventy-five, twenty-five match, then I'm going to really have to find out, okay, where's that twenty-five percent coming? Yeah. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Okay, all right. Meeting adjourned?